The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order. Let the law reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. Tonight, we're going to begin our meeting by presenting a proclamation to Hastings Family Service and Chris, if you could join me at the podium over here? Thank you very much. As many of you might know, March is a very important month for the Hastings Family Service, and I'm gonna let Chris talk about that in just a few minutes. But in honor of March and the importance of it to the Hastings Family Service and for food share or food banks all across our state, it's a very important month, and we'd like to recognize it by a proclamation. So I'm going to have Councilmember Vaughn take each paragraph, council members, and read the proclamation until it comes back to me. So Councilmember Vaughn?
Whereas Minnesota Food Share has coordinated a March campaign for 35 years to restock food shelves around the state of Minnesota and...
Whereas one in 10 Minnesotans are food insecure and do not have access to adequate food on a regular basis and...
Whereas Hastings Family Service has provided help and hope and served the basic needs of our community since 1970 and...
Whereas 51% of our community members who visit the Hastings Family Service food shelves indicate that someone in the household has skipped a meal because there was not enough food and...
Whereas the generosity of our community makes it possible for Hastings Family Service to provide help and hope to our neighbors who lack food, housing, clothing, or transportation and...
Whereas all gifts of money and food throughout the month of March are proportionately matched by Minnesota Food Share and...
Therefore, be it resolved, I Paul Hicks, Mayor of the City of Hastings, do hereby declare a citywide food fight during the month of March to restock the food shelf at Hastings Family Service and fight hunger in our community. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, you betcha.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It is an honor. We just had the opportunity at Hastings Family Service to visit with the entire city council, the city staff, and to tour Hastings Family Service. And we hope that we have engaged them and enlightened them on the reality of hunger because it is around us here in our community. As you heard, 51% of the folks who come through our door every single month report that someone in their household went without something to eat. And that is a staggering number. But Minnesota Food Share is here to help us combat that hunger. And today, we really want to encourage you to get on board. And our own police chief, who I don't see him here, but he was also at the tour today, has been challenged by the Dakota County Sheriff, Tim Leslie, to engage in a food fight. And you can help make that happen by voting for our police chief with dollars and with pounds of food. And you can bring them to the police station or here at the city offices. And by doing that, you'll help us to combat hunger and fight hunger in our community. As I left tonight and some of the other council members left the building, I walked to the parking lot by the beautiful pavilion. And there, standing underneath the overhang of our new public restrooms, was a gentleman on a bike. And I don't know if any of you saw him, but he was on a bike, just standing there, staying out of the rain. I'm not sure who he is and if he's someone that we help, but I would expect if you're on a bike, just hanging out, taking shelter, that probably you might be homeless. And that is a reality here in our community today. And those are part of the many stories and the many faces that we see every day at Hastings Family Service. So I thank you, City of Hastings, and I thank you, Mayor, and I thank you, the Hastings community, for walking alongside us this month. Our goal this month is to raise $160,030 and 30,000 pounds of food. It sounds like a big number, and it is. But the reality is, that's what it takes so that we can continue to fight hunger here in our community. So go to our website at www.hastingsfamilieservice.org and learn about the citywide food fight. And please, vote for our police chief because he likes lemon meringue, and he will get a lemon meringue pie in his face if he is the winner. So please, please vote and vote often. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that presentation. Council, before us, we have the minutes of the February 16th City Council workshop and the regular city council meeting on February 21st, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting or both those meetings? Councilmember Liefel?
Just want to note that my name is misspelt on these minutes.
Okay, we'll get that corrected. Thank you. That's why we do these kind of things. Okay? Other than that, once they're corrected, it'll stand approved. Counsel cites to be considered? Any counsel cites to be considered? Seeing none, council consent agenda? What's your wish? Councilmember Brock makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Balsanik. That motion is now before the body? Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay? The motion prevails. Next, under our agenda, under community development, we have a resolution before the city council regarding a vacation easement to South Oaks addition. John, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. The item we have before you tonight is a vacation of drainage and utility easement within the South Oaks second addition, the property shown here on the map above. You may recall that at the last meeting, the city council gave approval to South Oaks of Hastings fourth addition, which is a replat of this area into 30 single-family lots. As part of that subdivision, we need to vacate certain drainage and utility easements, which are located here in the red circles, so we can clear the plat prior to replating the new lots on top of it. And so we're asking to do that tonight. This is a public hearing. You can open that at this time, or I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. It's not a public hearing. It's not a public hearing. Okay. Noted, it should be a public hearing, so I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this particular issue? Vacation of easement. Well, it's not all rushed to the podium at one time. No. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, this issue is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion? Makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Foltz. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay? The motion prevails. Next, we have a resolution for the city council in regards to approving a type-two home occupation permit, tent and chair rental for 3923 Martin Lane. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. As you are aware, we have two types of home occupations that we issue within the city of Hastings. One, a type-one occupation, which is something that can be done without city council approval and planning commission review, and also a type-two application. Now, a type-two application is for an occupation in which there may be outside employees or there may be use of a garage for the business itself. The one we have before us tonight at 3923 Martin Lane is a home occupation that does use a portion of a garage or a garage to be constructed. You can see here on 3923 Martin Lane, it's a vacant lot today. The applicants, the Shermans, are proposing to construct a house looking something like this on the property and to operate a home occupation out of there. The home occupation would be for a tent and chair rental business, so they would use a portion of the garage space to store some of the items related to the business. As you can see from the floor plan here, the garage, the third stall of the garage would be made extra deep to accommodate the extra materials needed for the occupation itself. The planning commission did review this at their last meeting on February 27th, voting 4-0 to recommend approval of the home occupation permit. During the public hearing portion of it, notification was sent out. There was no one that spoke for or against the application at the meeting. The planning commission did discuss a couple of issues related to the project, one of them being how the tents would be dried out. They stated that they would be dried out on location and brought back, and also discussed some of the vehicles related to the business. The Shermans would utilize two trailers for the project itself for the home occupation. Under the home occupation ordinance, you're allowed one vehicle, one commercial vehicle, one trailer that is specific for that business. The Shermans are not planning to mark these vehicles with insignia for the business, and they're planning to store one of the trailers inside at all times. So with that restriction, the planning commission was amenable to the permit request itself. So I'm not sure if the Shermans are present tonight. They are great. They're here tonight if you have any questions for them, and I can stand for any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, John. Appreciate that very much. Council, this issue is now before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn?
A quick question for the applicant. Are the... Will people come to your place to pick up their own? Were they not? So it's only delivery by you? You can't come rent?
There's no customers that come to the actual... our actual homes.
Okay. Councilmember Liefel?
I have a question regarding the property itself. So is there a requirement by the city that the residence be built prior to being able to utilize it as a business? So right now, it's a vacant lot. Could they, per se, set up a tent and start their business before their property is built?
Understand, yeah. There would be a requirement that the home be constructed prior to operation of the business, correct?
Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, is there any stipulation in the agreement that there will be no material stored outside of the building itself, even temporarily? I know we've run into problems like this with other businesses where, you know, things start to spill outside. And I just want to ensure that the integrity of the neighborhood is to remain sound.
Sure. And council member, we do have a specific requirement under the home occupation provisions that prohibits exterior storage of materials or equipment. And so that's within the ordinance itself. So they would need to abide by that, or their home occupation permit would be at risk.
One more question. What's... What is the length of the permit in terms of the application? How long? Is there a review that occurs in a year, two years, whatever?
Sure. I'll... With the home occupation permit, it's given for the first year, reviewed after the first year, then issued on a five-year basis from that standpoint. So upon the first year, we will review the application back with the city council, make sure that the provisions are being adhered to, and if that's the case, issue a five-year permit from that point.
And then, if down the line, the owner, the property owner, business owner were to move, sell the property, does that permit transfer to a new owner, or would that have to go through a new application process?
On this one, I may look to Dan a little bit. I know typically with a special-use permit, it stays with the property, I believe. Now, with a home occupation permit, I don't know if that would be something that would stay with the property or with the owner in a circumstance like this. Your Honor, council, I do believe that it would be specific to these owners, and any subsequent owner would need to come and reapply and start the process all over again.
Okay, because that's, yeah, paramount to my agreeing to this licensure. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Okay, I'll seek a motion. Councilmember Foltz makes a motion? Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Balsanik. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay? The motion prevails.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the economic development plan presentation. And Morgan, welcome to the meeting. Very glad to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hicks, city council members. So I'm just gonna go through a high-level review of our economic development plan that we received from WSB. I'll start out with the analysis of current demographics. We'll go through a review of current city code, financial assistance programs, future growth policies, SWOT analysis, our unique selling proposition, potential development contacts, and then a strategic plan matrix. So as far as demographics, Hastings is projected to continue to have a higher number of lower-value homes than the state and Dakota County. So their recommendations are to focus on mid-to-higher-level home construction companies to expand inventory and provide a better balance of home value pricing. We also currently have a significant number of jobs in the service sector, which may be contributing to the lower-per-capita income as compared to our comparison groups. So a recommendation is to develop a program to attract businesses, specifically those in manufacturing, finance, insurance, and real estate sectors. These sectors can help provide the primary wage-earning potential and can assist in increasing the overall income. Based on our current assistance programs, Hastings has the ability to assist new and existing businesses to grow and expand. But in addition to our current programs, it's recommended that we begin a consistent business expansion and retention program to allow better flow of information from businesses or from the business community in the city. So this was our code review and analysis conclusions. The majority on the list were competitive and comparable. There are a few opportunities that they highlighted that we have the potential to improve, and I'll go through them a little bit in the next few slides. So included in the list of items to review was SAC and WAC fees. This report by WSB was a more broadly-focused study that looked at all areas of economic development as compared to the LR study that we looked at previously that had a more targeted approach to specific fees and rates. The comparable groups and scope of each study were also a little different. So when you compare SAC and WAC fees in the WSB report, Hastings was considered competitive on their sewer access charges, but not on water access fees. It was suggested by WSB that the city take a look at their WAC fees to determine whether they should be modified or determine the best approach for the city to increase the effectiveness of overall economic development strategies as well as competitiveness with our neighboring cities. So with that said, fees were one chapter of a large report. While SAC and WAC charges are important, are an important part of economic development, these fees are only a part of the equation. Other items that are essential for development include workforce availability, available assistance programs, location, access, land and site availability, as well as overall community attractiveness and fit for the business. So some additional recommendations was the development of zoning districts that include dimensional requirements for Vermillion Street as well as the remaining commercial areas outside of downtown and Vermillion Street. And they also recommended dimensional standards be set for a new industrial park if and when that time comes. Defining standards will help differentiate between light and heavy industrial uses and ensure compatibility and appropriate integration with surrounding residential areas. Although WSB found that Hastings currently has a good set of possible financial assistance tools for new and expanding businesses, they did have a few recommendations, including reviewing our rehabilitation loan program to make sure the size of the loans does not become more expensive to administer than the value, changing our assistance programs to include a wage component to encourage higher-paying positions, and the adoption of a tax abatement program to reduce costs for companies looking to expand and locate in our community. It was also recommended that we should make adjustments as to how our financial assistance information is presented to businesses to allow for easier access and understanding. And some of these included, including the links to the Minnesota deed programs on our website, and the creation of single-page information sheets to better disperse that and help with an understanding in our business community. Hastings has a reputation of being easy to get along with, and we need to continue to keep a consistent message concerning economic development and the city's position of being business-friendly through both policy and practice. A unique feature of the city is its support of the arts community. So a recommendation from WSB was to continue to promote partnerships and investments in our local arts organizations, which will help create distinctive area identity, bring new visitors to the community, and foster events and connections that help support our local businesses. Hastings should also develop and maintain a database listing available properties and buildings in the community. Underutilized industrial parcels represent prime opportunities to grow the city's tax base and stimulate local job creation, and without the cost of extending new infrastructure. And WSB felt that this was a prime priority for us to do. Additionally, a working knowledge of available properties enables stronger partnerships with companies, entrepreneurs, developers, and real estate companies. Achieving shovel-ready certification for our industrial park will help us in the attraction of developers and businesses, as certification reduces time, expenses, and risk for developers and is seen as a competitive advantage for communities who hold that. A focus on reducing obstacles to increased development is also very important. The city should work proactively to identify these obstacles and promote policies that reduce development barriers for specific parcels, which I thought aligned great with our Vermillion Street corridor study. And then additionally, with about 40 acres remaining in the industrial park, the development and maintenance of this database will allow us to begin to think about opportunity for a future industrial park. Hastings will also need to use our information gathered from business visits to determine business needs. The responsiveness to these needs, which includes flexible and receptive policies, is critical to the retention of our existing businesses. We also need to continue to expand our involvement with regional and state economic development organizations to benefit from their marketing efforts, as these organizations will continue to help us tell our story and reach a market that we're not able to do so ourselves. So I'll just go through our SWOT analysis here. Some of our strengths: sense of community, our financial assistance programs, our arts community, our reputation, access to rail, location to the Twin Cities, and our historic There's quite a lot of weaknesses that they listed, so I'm just gonna focus on a couple. Our lack of established focus regarding economic development, which we're continuing to work on with this position and with our initiatives that we're moving forward on. Our aging population and worker replacement challenges, and this isn't a challenge just to us. The whole metro, the whole business community is looking at, you know, their retention and their attraction of skilled workforce. And the perception of distance from Minneapolis to St. Paul. And as we continue to tell our story, I think that will help with the perception of our distance and just letting people know that we're not that far away. Some additional weaknesses: the outflow of residents for employment, the underutilization of properties in our community, and just the understanding and utilization of our financial assistance programs by our business community. And there's quite a lot of opportunities as well. So our focus on Vermillion Street for development and redevelopment. Our proposals have been received for our Vermillion Street RFP, so we're just beginning the review process right now. Evaluating the policy for the city to purchase properties and participation in projects. So, you know, understanding our role as a city in the development and redevelopment of different projects throughout the city, and then evaluating our current business park options for future growth. Some additional opportunities include perception, the perception that Hastings is inaccessible or out of the way, strengthening and continuing to improve our community as being developer-friendly, and increasing headroom communications and marketing. So I think all three of these kind of work together as we continue to build our story and continue to tell our story. Some threats include transit, affordable housing for younger families, fees, and our location on the border with Wisconsin. So a unique selling proposition is an important part of a city's ability to tell its story. It should be a living statement of the city and needs to be reviewed and updated as projects are completed and areas are redeveloped. So this was the unique selling proposition, which I won't read it all out loud, too. But I thought that it had a good sense of who Hastings is and what we do. So strong relationships with the development community allows the city to receive insight and perspective from an objective third party. These relationships will not only open up new opportunities for development, but will help the city continue to move forward and remain competitive, not only with our neighbors, but on a much bigger scale. And the strategic plan matrix was developed to serve as a roadmap as we continue to move forward and grow, and grow a stronger local economy. It includes a set of tasks for key stakeholders, creating a sense of accountability and ensuring the timely completion of projects. The plan, as with any plan, is only as good as the willingness of us to implement it and complete the required activities. And the ability to maintain flexibility to make changes and adjustments will allow the plan to remain relevant. So our next steps include a workshop to evaluate the strategic plan matrix. And there's action steps, and then assignment by headroom, city council, city staff, and local partners. And then, in the strategic plan matrix, as you'll see in your packet, has deadlines and timelines for us. So I'll leave it at that to open it up for any questions or comments.
Okay, council, let's open this up for discussion. I know maybe you had the report in your packets. Any comments or reflections of that report? Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just read a report that came from the Metropolitan Council newsletter last week, and the growth and development along the transit corridors that have been created in the metro area is absolutely astounding. I mean, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars in apartments and business offices and restaurants, and you name it, all up and down those lines. And I just see, you know, there was a... The reference in here to intercity transportation links. And I really see that as a highly important thing that I'd like to see us focus on in some way, shape, or form. I know we've got the millstone around our neck because it's all up to the Met Council in terms of what they want to do, but I would just like to see us rattle or saber some more and tell them, you've got to help us out. You know, the reference again that we're only 20 minutes from downtown St. Paul, and we've got a good, you know, a good transportation corridor. We had talked about light rail. We had talked about commuter rail. Those seem to have been tossed by the wayside. The next step was talking about a rapid bus route, very similar to what is available right now on Cedar Avenue, going from, is it Lakeville, up to the Mall of America now? And the development that is going along with that corridor. And, you know, a lot of people complain, you know, what do we need to have commuter service for? You know, everybody would rather drive a car, and so on and so forth. But the bottom line is, the development that goes along with that mass transportation that is put in place is absolutely phenomenal. And so I hope that... And I know Councilmember Vaughn is on the Red Rock Corridor Commission, and if there's any way, you know, to goose them along. We had former council member Ellen Schultz talk about how she was concerned that by the time we got any kind of rapid transit in the Hastings area, she'd be too old to be able to take advantage of it. Well, by the time we get it according to that schedule, you know, to connect Hastings to the rest of the cities, I won't be needing transportation. I'll be probably six feet under in some way, shape, or form. But, you know, I'm not getting any younger. And it would be great if I could get onto some kind of mass transit that would take me down to Target Field, would take me to the convention center in Minneapolis for the Home and Garden Show, to take me to the Orpheum Theater to see The King and I, you know, those kinds of things that are so enriching to our community. It's something that I think is a deal... It's something that I think is a deal where we have to make it more realistic. It has to be more realistic. And so I hope that we can channel our efforts to make this something that gets the attention of the rest of the powers that be. Because the development, again, without, you know, repeating myself too much, the economic development, which then expands the tax base, which then keeps our property taxes and keeps our business owners, you know, very, very happy. And the majority of our business owners here in Hastings are our mom-and-pop type businesses. We're not so much worried about Walmarts and Targets, irregardless to Target's latest income earnings reports that were out there, which are shaking the corridors of Wall Street. But we need that kind of development to keep ourselves vibrant, and I hope we can do something about that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Further discussion? You know, I'll just, Councilmember Foltz, please.
Thank you. I was curious as to what the timeframes were for the workshop that you mentioned. You're correct, there are timeframes in here with, you know, quarters for 2017, but I'm just, what were you thinking of as next steps? I'm not identifying where the workshop is in the timeframes.
Your Honor and Council, I don't know that we've identified the timeline for the workshop quite yet. We've got our council retreat coming up, we've got comprehensive plan going on, so we've got a number of balls in the air that this will be a piece of the puzzle.
Finance.
And finance, so that it'll be a piece of the puzzle, but we don't have it nailed down from a calendar perspective yet.
You know, I'll just say, I'm glad that, in receipt of this report, that we've already started some of these things. You know, we started this year with the Vermillion Street corridor. We've, you know, we've also started discussions on reducing our SAC and WAC charges, you know, as we had a workshop a couple of weeks ago, a reduction of twenty-five percent in each fund. So we've, you know, I'm enlightened that we've, can see the future a little bit. You know, some of these things sometimes need to be balanced, you know? Some might say, "Well, you know, Hastings has got a little bit of lower-valued homes." Well, that might be, to some people's view, these consultants, to me, it's called affordable housing. And that's great for startup for families. So if you have young families and you want to recruit and bring more young families in the community, you know, I think that more of a strength than a weakness. So, so those are some of the perceptions I have. You know, there are certainly some points here that we need to take a look at as we move forward in our comprehensive plan process. I think one of them is to identify what a future industrial park would look like and what type of, you know, employers we would like in there, like light industrial or things of that type, high-tech, and provide the broadband capabilities. And, you know, that investment would have to be part of any type of layout of any industrial park, that we would have to make additional investments to make that park attractive for those businesses. I am encouraged, I know, John, we've talked about in the past, bringing different employers to the city, and when we would go to the Department of Deed at the legislature, well, there wasn't enough money in the Minnesota Investment Fund or the Jobs Creation Fund. And one of the things I've noticed this year at the legislature is that's a higher priority, and those two funds will probably get more money this year, and we could use it. Because I know, not just for new businesses where lots of times these funds are asked for, but, hey, can we help out our existing businesses by tapping in to the Minnesota Investment Fund? Why can't we use that to expand our local businesses and champion our local small businesses for those type of funds? And we've become, have had more dollars available, I think we ought to go after it, go after it hard. The other thing about the transportation, I think Councilmember Balsanik, you bring up a very good point, and our connectivity to the metropolitan area. And I think that continues to be a thing I hope we talk about this weekend in the retreat. We do need more connectivity, but I think we can't forget some of the assets we have. You know, Transit Link, one of the things that we do have some issues with it, but one of the good things it does is that it does go to Cottage Grove, so you can get onto a bus to other localities, and it goes to Apple Valley to those transit stations. So we do have, I don't know if these folks even knew that, that we do have intercity travel, it's just not as promoted as much as it could be. So, I, you know, there are things that we can do, and we have begun to address, and I'm glad that this council's really ready to tackle it, and I appreciate the study. You know, it's a kind of a thick one, it took me a little while to read it, but there's a lot of good points in it, and I think our future looks very bright. This is a good pathway, and we'll do our best. There's just some things that we cannot change, and we know that. You know, we'd be sitting here saying how much easy it was to bring businesses in the town if we were sitting right next to 35W, right? I mean, that would be a lot easier task. But we also have so many great attributes to be in the city of Hastings that we can promote, that we can say, "That business over there, yeah, it might be close to the highway, but here's what we've got, and we got some diamonds here." So I'm looking forward to that discussion. If there's no other comment, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Morgan? The next item on the agenda is comments from the audience. Is there any comments tonight from the audience? Anyone like to address the council? I do, I take note that a Boy Scout troop, which one is it here tonight? Okay, thank you, guys, for being here tonight. Are we part of our merit badge? Good, good. Glad to, if, when our meeting ends, if you want to ask us a few questions, feel free to do that, okay? Anyone here with comments to the audience? Any comments? Okay, seeing none, council announcements? Announcements? Do we have any announcements? Okay. All right, I have a few announcements. Councilmember Foltz, did you have an announcement?
I have a new business.
Yeah, that's under announcements.
Okay, there you go. Yep.
Go ahead, I recognize you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Was in regards to solar garden subscriptions and taking advantage of them. The council, we had received an email from a vendor called Innovative Power Systems Inc., and so it spurred me to bring this up as new business. So I'm going to make a long story real brief, but I was hoping that the council would take it into consideration for the city to pursue a solar garden subscription. So, a little background, what happened, again, long story, very brief. In 2015, there was a window of opportunity where solar garden vendors could put in applications to Excel Energy to build these five-megawatt solar gardens. And so what basically happens is they build this ginormous solar array, right? It's, you know, acres in size, and so they put in the infrastructure, oftentimes they lease the land, and then they go after subscriptions, they want folks to subscribe to the solar garden. And then they have an agreement with Excel Energy where all of the power that's being generated by the solar array goes into the grid, okay? And then so Excel Energy has this great green energy, and then that just, you know, pumps into the normal system. And what happens then is Excel gives back a credit to the folks, and I'll show in summary a graphic of that. So this was going on in 2015, and Excel Energy created some regulations for these solar gardens. And so, real quick, to be a subscriber, and this is, you know, for us as personal individuals as well, to be a subscriber to a solar garden, you need to be in the county that the solar garden is being created in or an adjacent county, so it has limits. For, you know, governmental entities, businesses, the subscribers can go up to one hundred and twenty percent of their two-year average total electrical consumption, so you can actually buy more power than you're currently using. At least five subscribers have to be in every solar garden to help, you know, spread the availability of these systems. And then any one subscriber can only have up to forty percent of the garden's electrical power that's generated. So that's, again, very brief. So in response, in August of 2015, there was a big push by governmental entities to put out requests for proposals. And the biggest that was put out there was done by the Met Council. And to make life easier for cities and counties, thirty-three other cities and counties jumped onto that RFP process. And it was a big undertaking. I professionally, I work for the city of Red Wing, I'm the contracts administrator, purchasing agent for the city, and so I borrowed the Met Council's RFP, and we put it out. The council had taken it up for consideration, there's a lot of discussion that was had, and we moved forward. And in the end, we received a terrific offer through a group called Innovative Power Systems, who we had received the email from, and that's why I brought it up, because it's real. So the city of Red Wing locked in for a hundred percent of the city's electrical consumption. And so the total is five-point-seven million kilowatt-hours. And so in the end, the subscription is a flat rate of ten-point-nine-nine cents per kilowatt-hour with a zero percent escalator over twenty-five years. And over that twenty-five years, the city will save six-point-six million dollars. And so what that means, the zero percent escalator means, we all have inflation, right? Goes up every year, two to four percent. Utilities generally go up faster than normal inflation rates. And so by having that zero percent escalator, that's how you get the accumulated savings, because you're still paying ten-point-nine-nine cents per kilowatt-hour over twenty-five years. So twenty-five years from now, it can be twenty cents per kilowatt-hour, but we're still paying ten cents an hour, and so that's how you get the big savings. And so as Red Wing was doing this, the school district also began negotiations with IPS, and so they are actually leasing the land to IPS and then coming back and then also getting a subscription. So the city of Red Wing and the school district are both subscribers, and it just went live. And so currently, the city of Red Wing is getting fifty-seven percent of its energy from the solar array there. And Red Wing, and there's still availability that's in that garden, and IPS still needs to build more gardens for Red Wing and its other subscribers to be able to meet their full subscription agreement. So there's, so that's just one vendor. There are other vendors that are available currently. Dakota County is filling up the solar gardens. But the good news is, Good Hugh County has several that are still taking applications, and so there's still this ability for the city to put out a request for proposals and take into consideration the vendors that are out there and try to negotiate a good price. So after you put out an RFP, generally what, well, what we did was we did a letter of intent so as the solar garden is being built, if it's not already built. And then once it's closer to being built, then you put in place an actual agreement, purchase-power agreement, and then, so then you begin to lock in. And so I wanted to show folks, I provided a little diagram of the relationship between us all, and so, should I put this under an overhead or anything like that, or are we good?
I think we're good, yeah.
Okay. So it's a three-way, like, triangular relationship where the city is the subscriber, and again, you can do this as an individual, and you have that subscription with the solar garden vendor. And so you pay the solar garden vendor for your subscription, and there are some different arrangements, but the one that Red Wing, when they knew an agreement with, there was no upfront costs. They build it, they make it ready, once they turn on the switch, you begin, you know, to pay. And then they have a relationship with Excel Energy, and so they have an agreement for all the electricity to go to Excel Energy. And then Excel Energy is still your service provider, right? That's where you get, you know, you get the juice. And, but they bill, on your bill, they give you a credit back for all the energy that you have a subscription for. And so that's kind of like how the triangle works, the relationships between the three, and it seems to be working well. There are a number of these large solar gardens that are now coming online, and so it's pretty exciting. Unfortunately, I'm almost positive that that window is shut for these large solar gardens to be available. And there's only so much capacity that Excel Energy has available to take on the energy from the solar arrays, and so it's not unlimited. It's not like, oh, we can put it off five or ten years, you know, once those subscriptions are gone, they're gone. And so what makes government so wonderful as a subscriber is that, unlike businesses, you know, which have ebbs and flows of, businesses come and go, right? Government, for the most part, doesn't go away, right? And so vendors really like to have governmental entities as anchors for their solar gardens, if that makes sense. So hopefully that would give us more leverage for securing a competitive rate. So I would like to encourage the council to take this up for consideration a little bit more. So, Mayor, I'm looking to you for guidance on what, how the...
Well, it's an interesting concept, you know, electricity is something that we're used to running. You know, we have a hydroelectric plant, which is clean and renewable, and certainly this is clean and renewable. So I think if we want to have a further discussion about it, we have a utilities committee that could look into this in a little more in-depth and be able to see how practical it would be in the Hastings area, because I don't know how many gardens are built here or would be built here, you know, take a look at that study and be able to see what we could do as we move forward from this point, if it can be a realistic goal that the city could be a participant. But I think we need a, we need a body to take a look at this and a more roll-up-your-sleeves and jaundice eye. So I would recommend, when the utility committee, sometime in the future, in the next few months, get together and take a look at this concept and determines viability, and if it looks really good and it's something we want to pursue, then I think we should do it. Is there any questions? Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had a question for you, Tina, so to, so the solar gardens aren't necessarily being put in the city of Hastings. We're piggybacking off of a solar garden that's existing someplace else?
Right. Well, it's based, the jurisdictions that you have to look at are by county. So anywhere in Dakota County, a solar garden could be put in place and that we can subscribe to, or an adjacent county. So like Good Hugh County to the south, you can't go over to Wisconsin, so it's to our west. I can't even think what it would be to our west.
Carver, Scott.
Right, okay. So, so those are the only counties that we would be able to take into consideration. Of course, Ramsey's to the north, but the heart, the core of the metro isn't really a viable site necessarily for them to be, so I don't think there's availability for Ramsey County.
So, just to clarify, we're not, are we looking at the feasibility of having this type of a project? I get the subscription piece, it's like buying a magazine, and I get that subscription piece to it. But would there be a possibility in the future, as we pursue this and look at it, to actually house the gardens within our community?
Oh, there you go. Well, I guess it would be possible if there was a place to put it, if the city had, you know, land. And then there's also issues to deal with connectivity so that they can hook up to the grid and such, and so it's not quite as easy as it would seem. The city of Red Wing actually did try to make available a parcel of land for Minnesota Community Solar to be able to develop an array. And it was interesting, with the goal of making it available for local residents, like those would be the primary users, but then there was such a natural private-business inclination to, you know, to do their own thing that we, or the city of Red Wing decided not to make that land available, but the Red Wing School District did, they had all this extra, you know, these extra fields that they were able to leverage and lease it out. So I was, there is, I can show you, there is a grid, there's a...
Well, you know, that's why we want to probably take it to the utility committee.
Yeah, that shows all of the possible...
Remember, this is an item under new business.
Yeah, right, right.
We're not meant to have a big discussion. It's not something that was regularly scheduled on the agenda. You know, this is being brought forward and be sent to committee, so I think we're proving the reason why it needs to go to committee.
Yeah, it is complicated.
So that's, you know, just a reminder, as the parliamentarian, we are under new business, which we can introduce and talk about things at a limited basis.
Would you like a motion, then?
No, we'll just direct it informally to the utility committee. Take a look at that, okay?
Okay, all right, thanks.
Because, are there any other announcements?
I do have an announcement, yes. I'm the chair of the Public Safety Committee of the council, and we have a meeting on March twentieth at 6:00 PM. That would be myself, Councilmember Foltz, and Councilmember Leifeld. We will be discussing the process that we are going to follow and some drafting of an ordinance regarding safe zones in our community. We received a petition from citizens to consider enacting an ordinance about safe zones, and so we're going to discuss the process and ideas around that. So that is March twentieth, before the next council meeting at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Councilmember Balsanik?
I wasn't sure if you were going to announce this. I wasn't sure if you were going to announce this, but tomorrow, there is a tour of the Dakota Communications Center at 5:30, and I believe a number of council members are going to it. And I'm glad to see that. I'm on the board of directors there, and it's going to be a fascinating tour. I think you're going to really enjoy the magnitude of the whole operation. Also, let's see, after I get my hair cut on Thursday, there's a, there's a hedra meeting at 6:30 here in the council chambers. And then I believe you're going to talk about the retreat that we've got.
Yes, yes.
Coming up this weekend then, okay.
Thank you. Is there any further announcements? Seeing none, I have a couple of more announcements. A hedra, as Councilmember Balsanik indicated, will be meeting Thursday, March 9th, at 6:30 here at City Hall. The Public Safety Advisory Commission will also be conducting a meeting, and they're going to be planning, this sounds good, National Night Out, which is the first week of August. I can't wait, you know, better weather. They'll be meeting at 6:30 at City Hall. The city council will be holding a strategic planning retreat on Friday, March 10th, and Saturday, March 11th, at the La Duque Historic Estate Council, so we'll see you there on Friday night. The Planning Commission will be meeting on Monday, March 13th, at 7:00 PM. The Park and Recreation Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, March 17th. That can't be right, because that's Friday, the 17th. Tuesday, March 14th, at 6:00 PM at City Hall. I think they might be somewhere else on the 17th. The next city council meeting will be on Monday, March 20th. The Public Safety Committee, which as Councilmember Brock's indicated, will be also meeting prior to that council meeting, they'll be meeting at 6:00 PM on March 20th. Council, we have no further business before us, a motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Brock makes that motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. That is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.